Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Dana Parrish to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have on the agenda, public hearing and comment on agenda items. Please limit it to two minutes. Come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
Madam Chair, agenda approval, please. We don't have it today.
Well, this is the agenda.
Okay, let's approve the agenda.
All right. Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the agenda, Order of Business May 29, 2018, Special Meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council, as presented.
My second.
All right. Any discussion? Motion is carried. All right, next, we have public hearings and comment.
There wasn't a vote, Madam Chair. You need a vote.
Vote.
Oh, let's vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items. State your name, address, and limit it to two minutes, please.
Okay, I'm Ken Greibel, the city's Parks and Recreation Director. I've been director for the city of Parks and Recreation for 31 years. What I'd like to talk about is the budget in line item that included three department heads who took early out six years ago. I'd like to clear up some, I think, inaccuracies, and I also would like to add some additional information that I don't think has been brought to the table yet, and then I'll just leave it to the city council to digest it any way you so desire. I first would like to really talk about how the deal, as that's been referred to, I refer to it as a cooperative partnership between department heads and the city to come up with a way to cut monies when the city was ready to go bankrupt, and I think that's the very critical part. First thing is that the department heads did not come up with the idea. This was brought to us by the city, and we were told what was being offered. Now, in my situation, and it might also pertain to the others, but I can't speak for them directly because their situation might be slightly different, but I would imagine very similar. The first thing is, it wasn't an easy decision. Everybody sounds like it was a great deal. The first thing that was left out of there when they say, "You're collecting a salary and getting your retirement at the same time." What a great deal. What has not been mentioned is that there was a $28,000 pay cut. That's not taking your salary. That's taking a considerable reduction in your salary. I was making $83,000 six years ago. I'm now making 55, as your Parks and Recreation Director, giving you the same service, same effort. I've had a number of people come up to me and say, "You're part-time. I would hope you'd give me a little time." I've been, you know...
Yeah, we have to limit it to two minutes due to all the people in the audience.
All right, then I guess I'll have to talk really quick and hope you can stay with me, because I can see city council. It just seems like when people talk and you like the things they say, and no disrespect, they seem to get a longer time, but then when you hear something that maybe you don't want to hear, we get less.
Not on my time.
Okay, well, that's neither here nor there. So anyways, here's the thing. Number one, I had to give up years of retirement towards my retirement to take that deal. I didn't get a 30-year retirement. I had to take five years off from that. Over a period, that's loss of money on top of the $28,000. I also am now drawing a lesser salary towards my social security. That is also a lesser amount of money, okay? And department heads are the only class of workers in the city that cannot negotiate. We're the only ones that are held to a different standard. It's strictly on performance, because we serve at the whim of the mayor.
Okay, well, thank you very much. It's over the time. It's two minutes and 30.
Then what I'll do is have my wife finish it. Thank you.
That's fine. You're welcome, too. Two minutes, please.
I'm not prepared, but I'm very upset. I think what's being done to our department heads is completely inequitable and completely unfair. As Ken said, they were told, "You're going to get this buyout. You get to take your retirement early, and you get to double-dip." No, you don't double-dip. That retirement is theirs. That will go with them.
Best forward to now, what's happening now.
What's happening now.
Six years later.
Okay, six years later. We ran the numbers, and we have saved the city. The three department heads combined with their benefits and their early $30,000 pay cut came to over a million dollars' worth of savings for our city. That's quite substantial. Now, going forward, to replace any one of these three department heads, you would have to start over, find somebody new who would want this position. For whatever the going rate is, it could be anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 to start, plus another $30,000 on top of that for their benefit package. So now you're over $100,000 to hire somebody new to replace every one of these department heads with at least 30 years seniority. Good luck finding that. The fact you're willing to let these three gentlemen leave our city with all of this expertise, all of their professionalism, and the pride that they have of serving our community for 30 years plus is, I think, shameful. You cannot let these men leave. You cannot determine their fate by wanting to, I don't know, play political games.
Okay, the last thing I just want to add is...
Okay, you've had your two minutes. I'm sorry.
Let me tell you, I'm going to go ahead and speak.
I'm really sorry, but you can't.
You'll have to have me arrested, then.
Point of order. We've got somebody else waiting.
Mr. Greibel can use my two minutes up. My name is Gary Barkoff. I live at 5615 Academy Street.
Go ahead, then. Okay, all I want to do is make one last point. Just one last point.
Sure.
What you're telling me as a 30-year dedicated employee is that you are telling me it is worth letting me go, which I can go now because my income, I have already replaced the $55,000 with my social security and my other investments and other things that have gone, I've already replaced it. So I have no financial incentive to work for the city. But what you're telling me as a city council now is that you'd be willing to spend an extra $30,000 of taxpayer money to see me go, and that hurts, because you would have to hire someone between 70 and 80, and that's all we're asking, somewhere in that range, but you'd have to pay a benefit package. My benefit package goes with me. So that's what you're telling me. That's what you're telling Bill Zimmer, and that's what you're telling Mohammed, that you, as a council, who's so concerned with money, are willing to spend an additional $30,000, and that's where I'll leave it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Susan.
State your name, your address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Suzanne Todd, 4011 Academy Street, and I have been cut off many times. So it's not just you speaking up here, okay? Okay, I believe that only those who are still working under the 10% pay cut of years ago should be brought up to the wages they received when the pay cut was first put into effect. However, any other reason should not be given to anyone else, and here's my reason why. According to the last audit by Plant Moran, Section 3 of the Legislative and Informational Items Page 8, the city has over $111 million of unfunded health care. What does this mean? According to Plant Moran, post-employment benefits for city workers are basically unfunded at this point. This means that if the $100 million is not funded, future retired city workers would have to take a deep decrease in health care benefits and/or their pensions if swift action isn't taken to help this fund out. On a personal note, my husband had his pension cut by 75% this past January. I can't begin to tell you what an awful blow this has to any retirement plans we may have had. Our golden years have turned to rust. With the talk of many in Congress wanting to rid this country of Medicare and social security, there will be standing room only in the underpasses and alleys where seniors will be forced to live. The $111 million negative balance should be a top priority in our city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step up to the podium, state your name, and you have two minutes.
Hi, Sue Kaminsky, 7742 Amboy. First off, I think it's great that the city workers have worked together to keep the city what it is and going strong, and I understand that people took pay cuts. I also understand that a lot of the other workers did not get raises for years, and I mentioned this last week, and I'll mention it again. I'd like to see the city continue to work going forward, so I think in order to be equitable, a balance of raises for the union workers and the department heads in order so it does not create such animosity. So if it was a little more equitable amongst everybody, I think that would be much fairer. I've tried, in my role, budgeting things, and I understand how hard it is, and I applaud you for what you do, but I think we have to be fair to all the city workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make any comments before we begin?
Joe Kocidzki, citizen of Dearborn Heights for 53 years, with a little bit of governmental experience. I'm asking the council to reconsider its position on the salaries that have been debated on May 22 and some of the commentary that you hear today. It is very difficult to find experienced people as you have. In addition to that, if you allow these people to step away from their responsibilities, you're going to have additional expenses in retirement, health, and catching up on a vast number of years of experience that is already in place. So it's not appropriate to allow these people to walk away. In one particular instance, I was shocked at the fact that the mayor's administrator did not get a raise at all. If she does not deserve anything at all, she should not be here at this point. So in a sense, I'm saying that she should be restored to the level of pay as the other members are getting, as originally proposed in the budget. I can only cite, at this point in the three-minute timeframe that you give me, one very exciting occurrence that happened not too long ago while I sat on the other side of the table, and that is that Christina Cromer is the only elected or appointed public servant who successfully accomplished a goal of doing something with a major problem in the South End, the Ecorse Creek. She, single-handedly, fetched out numbers of dollars for the Hanover Project, and there are other situations that I could point to, but in respect for your time limitations, that'd be sufficient.
Thank you very much.
Please give some consideration to the appropriate conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
You know, first of all, I want to tell you that I prayed for all of you this weekend, and I asked people in my church to do the same thing, because I think what you're about to do is going to have a profound effect. I don't really think that a lot of you really understand what's about to occur. And I'm in city hall most every day, if I'm not out on the road, and today is an example of an opportunity where we got to go around and talk. We had a little event down in HR today where we had cupcakes and cookies, and we invited all the staff to come down and just kind of interact with each other. The folks in city hall are scared, and part of the reason why they're scared is because they don't know what tomorrow is going to mean for them. They've heard that their department heads may be leaving, and whatever your opinion is and whatever your thought process is in terms of the decision you're about to make, you have to consider the fact that there are some people that work here day, and we've been talking about them. We've been talking about, Grandma Susan even talked about the employees and making sure it's fair for them. Well, what's fair for them also is to understand that tomorrow, we may have to have a conversation with the entire building department if Mohammed Sob decides that he's going to leave. And then we have to talk realistically, and we have to talk appropriately about what that transition should look like. Please consider what the transition should look like. Do not do something that's going to create such an abruptive change. If that change occurs so abruptly, then with all due respect, what you're about to do is going to be very irresponsible. At least sit down, please, just one minute, at least sit down and consider the idea that maybe what we need to do is sit down with administration and talk about a transitional plan that includes these department heads. However that turns out, and whatever we decide that needs to happen as a result of that...
Thank you.
Despite what everybody thinks, we can't just stop tomorrow. We can't. We have business that has to happen tomorrow. I don't know how many people are experienced or prepared enough to walk into the building department tomorrow and know what to do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Please consider that. Anyone else? Yes?
I agree that everybody needs raises. Everybody's entitled. But we're talking about if this person's going to walk out tomorrow, he's threatening he's going to walk out tomorrow. Where's the transition? We've had six years to have people in there, in that office, to know what's going on in case something happens. If one of our people drops dead tomorrow, who's going to take his place? Somebody should know, and that's part of the problem. I would think that maybe the mayor should have been watching and making sure that things were being transitioned properly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
We run a lean machine here.
We don't have a lot of backup.
Okay. Anyone else?
Council chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I want to break the protocol, if you don't mind, please. Because when we collectively, as a council, approved the part of the agenda where people come up and speak about agenda items, we weren't supposed to respond to the public. But I'd like to say something, if you don't mind, please, if it's okay with the rest of the council.
True.
Again, I'm going to reiterate what you just said. Six years. This ordinance has been on the books for six years, and why we picked now to do it, and the mayor made a statement last week about how council's acting. Well, I'll tell you what, this council's young and inexperienced, and I believe that's why it was brought on now, because maybe we didn't know about this. But I remember it as a person sitting in the audience for many years, and it's not proper to put it all the blame on us, why these people can't get raises. They've got their pensions, they get a salary, okay, which probably equals the $80,000 anyway that they're asking for. Now, I understand, I know I worked it, I wanted raises all the time. I'm no different than anyone else. Any one of you wants to make more money. Well, why pick now? And it's just like she said, I don't care how much of a lean machine you run, if you got a person that goes down for any reason at all. The city doesn't stop running. President Kennedy was killed. The country didn't stop operating. President Reagan was shot. The country didn't stop. This is a position that's far greater than this city could even fathom to have, and it didn't stop. Now, I appreciate what everybody wants, but I also am getting calls from residents that aren't here today that are fighting these raises, people that aren't here, okay? Many people, okay? And when our city official could tell someone that there isn't any money to give them but more than 1%, and then ask for a 38% raise, to me, is ridiculous. Nobody in this country has ever gotten a 38% raise in one calendar year. Nobody. I want to know who hasn't, okay? Who's gotten it? At 38%, be lucky to get 1% or 3% anywhere in this country, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those were my sentiments exactly, because I was newly elected in 2012 and sat here at this table, and I can remember Councilman Muscat, thank you for bringing that back, because I know you sat on the audience. But part of that discussion, and I can tell you, I acknowledge the savings. I acknowledge that they stayed on. I acknowledge that they have earned that pension without a doubt. But also, we need to be responsible, and there should have been a plan already happening to transition. You always want to train somebody to take someone's position, and Councilman Bazey will tell you, from a military perspective, you're always training for your next position, but you're also training the person to take your place. And I think that's a really important part of the story that needs to be told. Now, I spent a lot of time researching Plant Moran's financial statement from 2017, and I pulled out some things. I think that's another issue that really needs to be discussed. I mean, we have, we're reporting standards are going to be changing effective June 30, 2018, where it's required to report that unfunded liability, which totals $110 million. That's significant, and what you shared, thank you for sharing, because you shared the personal side of the story of how it impacts families, and it does. When you're talking about people's health care and their retirement, we've seen it like with the county, we've seen it with the city of Detroit and other communities where they had to cut what was promised to their employees. This is what we're talking about here. We're outpacing the funds and balances that are available, so we're ultimately impacting promises made to our retirees and employees, and we need to have those discussions, and that should have been included in this budget.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make two comments. One is where the number came from, the council. In fact, Mr. Muscat, I think you were the one that proposed it. Court administrator got a 47.5% increase. In regards, and I'm so happy people are talking about unfunded liabilities, before the end of the year, and in fact, a couple of years ago, I asked this council, and the council that was here then agreed, and we put a couple million dollars into health care. For police and fire, because of Act 345, a lot of the funding will be able to be handled through the Act 345 millage. It's a dedicated millage for it. It's a general government employees that I'm very concerned about, and we have till the end of the year come up with a proposal, and I've been working in the city of Dearborn in the state legislature, because we have an excellent financing grade, and we'll be coming back with, to this council, with a proposal, because it does need to be addressed. But I wanted to address it in the very first year I was here. I got a lot of opposition. I don't think any of you were here then, but we did manage to put a couple million, and we'll be putting more money in and finding a solution, because I don't want people to go through what the one speaker indicated, where all of a sudden you think you have a pension, you think you have some benefits, and then they disappear. I think that's tragic.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I want to speak on behalf of one of the new members of the city council. This is put on our plate. It's a big issue, and it's something that we didn't really have time to digest. You need more than a month or six weeks, or whenever we had it, to really, something that's this important to everybody, should have been brought to our attention or the prior council's attention, you know, six months ago, that this was coming up. And the fact that all other city employees are getting raises at 2% one year, 1%, then another 1%, or another 1%, however it works out, the people that are in question here no doubt deserve a raise, and they work hard at their job. It's evident in our city, it runs really well. But to get it all in one lump sum like that, I just can't phantom that. I mean, when everyone else is getting impartial a little bit at a time. I would have been in favor if they would have been, you know, 2% raise for everybody and then, or 5% or whatever, but it was never brought to us, and we just didn't have the time, because we're right now, I think we're in constraint right now to, we have to pass this right by state law or whatever, tonight.
No, not tonight. We still have more time if we need it.
How much time do we have? Well, but it's coming up, and it's too much. We asked for paperwork, and we've got paperwork, and then we got other paperwork that went against that paperwork, and we don't know which one to believe. Believe me, we're really racking our brains on this thing, and we want to be fair to everyone, and that's what we're here for, is to be fair, not to only department heads or city employees or union employees, but to all the residents of Dearborn Heights, and that's what we're doing. We might look bad to some people, and we might look good to other people, but what we're doing in our hearts is what we think is best for the residents of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Umbella?
Well, with all due respect to all my fellow council people, I'd like to disagree with some of you guys, and I'll tell you guys why. First of all, in terms of the union workers, I personally, for one, have no problem with them getting their money back, especially the 10% pay cut. But let's make it clear, we're not the ones that negotiate with the union workers directly. We get the final negotiated contract between the union and administration, and then we just make a, we take a vote on it. We're not the ones that are directly negotiating with them. In terms of the department heads, you have people that have spent here 20, 30, 25, whatever it is, depends on a particular person, years with us, and have been committed to the city, have been committed to the residents, and have done, overall, from everything that I understand, a good job doing what they do. And then when the economy was down, they took a 10% pay cut. It is only right, same thing for the union workers, I want to make that clear, but it is only right that you, at the very minimal, reinstate that, because when you look at this, and we looked at this, and I know me and Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton had a little debate on that, but when you look at this, and you take a look at the same number of residents with different municipalities, they're getting paid almost consistently higher than we are paying. If you want good employees, if you want good workers, if you want good department heads, you got to pay them what is, and this is not my survey, this is a salary survey done by the Conference of Western Wayne, it's not my survey, that says that we are consistently below what's normal for the market. So it is only right that you, at the very minimal, reinstate the pay cut that they took, the 10% pay cut that they took, so that we keep people, we keep them doing a good job. And as far as the union workers, absolutely, I'm in favor of them getting reinstated their 10% pay cut. I don't want, I'm not the one that's negotiating with them directly. That's not on me. But the one that I do control is the department heads. I am fully in favor of giving them something favorable back so that we keep these types of people, because when somebody commits to you for 20 or 30 years, you keep those types of people. Instead, you know, you got loyalty from them, then you're going to go hire somebody new, inexperienced, they want new packages, not a good business model in my book. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Number one, when we talk about the retirement liabilities and the new accounting standard that's going to go into effect, that's something that's facing all the cities. That's something that the state is working on, and the cost of health care is something that we as a nation face, has been under a lot of discussion. But the point is well taken that when someone takes an early retirement, they're drawing on funds that they earn, they're not getting their social security. And I don't think an all-or-nothing approach is the way to go. I think discussion and compromise is always the sign of a good settlement, where everyone walks away a little bit unhappy, but with something.
No, you have some of this podium. Hi, my name's Christina Lazlo. I'm the only department head, the only city employee that council chose not to give anything to when asked why last week. It was not personal. I want council to realize this. I do, I know we have people in the audience that like to send foias, and all this information is foiable, from the clerk's office, even if you don't want to FOI it through me. What council keeps saying that the union only received 1% or 2% is false. Last year's budget shows what the then-ask-me workers were making. Compared to this year's budget, it's on average a 7% to 12% increase right now. They are now making 7% to 12% more. They're not putting in extra hours, they're not picking up extra slack. They're great workers, but they're not being asked to stay later or through their lunch or coming early without being compensated. That is not a correct fact that council keeps saying. It needs to be known, and if you want to, you can FOI it. Secondly, everybody got a raise, including elected officials, including elected officials this year who got 14%. Four of the elected officials voted on a court administrator raise that the mayor said was equal to over 40%. Lastly, being the only person keep throwing out with that 38%, I think it's comical that there's three other men that were at my salary last year at this time... there's three other men that were at my salary last year at this time, that are getting the same amount that you all approved, or are about to approve in the budget. Food for thought, when you have three men that you're approving the exact same amount of money, and you're not doing it to me, there's other flags that are being raised. And it's not about job performance, and it's not about what I do.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to speak real quick. Right behind us is the city of Dearborn Heights. We've been a city since 1963. I've been here all my life, most of you guys have. Tonight, our future lies in all of your hands. So, it's up to you, the council, that's going to give us a direction to the future in our city. All I'm asking is, do the right thing, each and every of you, and I'm sure we'll go in the right direction. So that, that's it. Just do the right thing, whatever you think is the right thing, and I think we'll all be good.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Back up, no. Back up, state your name.
My name's Dana Parrish, I live at 5614 Brandon Park. Just probably one or two things. I was, I spoke last week about a property near me. This sort of goes towards this whole situation we're talking about tonight. I had a few neighbors I didn't know about stop by and see me this week while I was outside doing some work, and they asked me about the situation when I spoke, and they addressed this, one of the situations they addressed me about was their ability to contact their mayor. And they asked me about the situation that I, that I had problems with. And I think that might be one of the items on the agenda this evening. If it's not, I'll step away, but I think one of the people that's on the agenda for a raise is that?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Let me, let me go to another item then. Another item, talking about the department heads, I was told that this, that the property down the street was purchased by the city last year, last fall, 2017.
Still doesn't.
Ah, wait, it does.
He's still got it.
It does. Because there's something called integrity. That was purchased in 2016. Mohammed Sob is the, is the, is the department head for that building department. Why was I lied to repeatedly by department head for the city?
Thank you.
14 years.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Madam Chair, I just have a follow-up question, because I keep hearing that the only employee not to get a raise was Ms. Lazlo. However, and I have raised this question before, and I have the contract in front of me, we do have an employee, I just want to follow up for clarity, who's in the building department inspector, that was, and I was told because of the contract with the Michigan Regional Council carpenters agreement, that agreement was approved in 2011, expired in 2015. So I guess my question is, why was that passed over? What were the conditions for not opening up and negotiating, and that individual did not get a raise?
He also didn't take a 10% pay cut, but he no longer works on taxes.
But, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdallah.
But I'd like to point out to the councilwoman, and that, in regards to that particular individual, when I looked at the numbers, you've got somebody that's making currently more than the department head. So to ask for a raise for him, and I'm not, this is nothing in regards to him, good or bad, I don't, I don't know the person personally, but I'm just saying, you can't have him have another raise way over the department head. That wouldn't make any sense for him, business model.
Right, understood, but that's also one of the department heads.
And I don't believe, and I don't believe they asked for a raise off the top of my head.
I don't know that to be true or not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So that's why I was asking.
I believe that's correct. He did not.
Did I ask for a raise?
That was the clarification I was looking for.
Right.
If that's true, you know, the fact, then that's fine, I would imagine.
Any other comments or concerns? Please step up to the microphone, state your name, in two minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Joe Hatch, I'm the director of the economic development. All I have to say is just a couple of words. I have worked with all the directors, and I have had great, great experience. We meet twice, twice every month. They are available on their cell phones. I've worked with the administrator, Chrissy, I worked with the mayor, I worked with all the directors. We reach each other's after work, we talk to each other's on the weekends, everybody has everybody's phone number, and we're always available to everybody. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Drapkowski, Columbia Street. Keep in mind, we have a failed ice arena that was condemned. Keep in mind, the mayor said that he was going to reorganize the building department. Keep in mind that we have people here that are quite capable with master's degrees to take over the jobs. And there's always somebody in line willing to take over your job. Like my bosses said before me, if you don't like it, there's the door.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone else?
I'm sure we'll get a building official.
It's licensed.
Okay, at this point, we're going to go over new business, which is the adoption of the 2018, 2019 corporate fund budget. Would we like to go over the budget adoption motions first, or would you like to go over the actual budget?
Well, the budget motions.
Go ahead and start reading them. Do the budget first, then?
Well, I'm just, I don't know.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the city council adopt the general government fiscal 218, 219 surplus budget in amount of $46,107,926. Support.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
I'd like, when appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to make some changes on that budget, when you feel it's ready.
Okay, we'll do it after this. We'll go through this first, then we'll go through the budget.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you have your chance.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next.
That the city council adopt the library fund fiscal 2018, 2019 surplus budget in the amount of $2,258,594.
Support.
Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Next.
That the tax levy for 2018, 2019 fiscal year to be set at 8.3167 mils.
Support.
Muscat supports. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have that 7.25 mils be levied to finance the voter-approved Act 345 Fire and Police Pension Fund for fiscal year 2018 to 2019 in the amount of $8,567,983.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
That the city council levy an additional, I'm sorry, I assume that's an, because there's a D on there.
I know.
Okay, so, just to read it properly. That the city council levy an additional 2.1833 mils on the taxable valuation for financing garbage and rubbish disposal for the fiscal year, fiscal year 2018-2019.
Seconded. Seconded by Councilman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks.
I move the city council levy additional 1.9568 mils on taxable valuation of public safety, as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdallah. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman.
That the millage approved for solid waste disposal by the electric in May 2000 be levied at .9784 mils.
Support.
Supported by Councilman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move city council approve the 2018, 2019 lump sum budget for the 20th District Court in the amount of $2,124,840 and 45 cents. Salaries not to exceed amounts specified in the budget. Support.
Supported by Councilman Bazzie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion's carried.
Council Chair.
Councilman Conston.
That the city council levy an additional .89, .89 mil to fund the city department for libraries, including new improvements of library buildings, as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Muscat. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carried.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzie.
I move the city council to approve that city council levy an additional .9294 mil to fund the city libraries, as approved by the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights.
Support.
Supported by Conston. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Looks like all the budget adoption motions have been approved. Next, on the agenda, we have the actual budget. How would you guys like to do that?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazzie.
I have a question, as stated earlier, the 110 or 111 million. I'd like to see something on here. Is anything coming out of here? I mean, it's been talked about for a while, and I know it's mentioned that somebody was resisting on the council, but I have not seen it since I've been on the council since January, or discussed or anything like that. So I'd like to see something on here. Also, I haven't seen anything on here, any of the adjustment, like where the adjustment made to the salaries. I don't know where that money went. So there was, I know there's been a lot of changes in here, it's been confusing. I think this is the third or fourth changes we made to this here, so I didn't go through it item by item, to see whether changes were made.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I believe that the, correct me if I'm wrong, someone please, that the 7.25 mils levied in the finance of the Act 345 is where we start trying to make a dent in the, no, that's not how that works.
No, no, the, what happened is, cities are always have, and most governmental units, if not all of them, were on a pay-as-you-go basis, from an accounting standpoint. And then, what happened is, something called the Financial Accounting Standards Board, and many corporations, and I think it was the National Truckers Group, I don't know their pension plan, but that would be a union, Teamsters. And you had, you had two or three major corporations that went bankrupt, and that had a significant effect, and people in Congress started to realize that these benefits that were granted employees were not guaranteed. So, to some extent, Congress, many years ago, and I don't recall the federal act, provided benefits for pensions, but it never provided benefits for health care. And so some people were able to at least salvage some of their pensions. So, the question came up, and it really came up, I believe, after the state of Illinois, which I believe has a unfunded liability of pensions close to $56 billion, if you can believe that. And that just includes the state, does not include municipalities or other governmental units in Illinois. The unfunded cost for the health care is also in the billions. So, Congress want to take some action, and I tell you this because a group that has a CPA, Financial Accounting Standards Board, is part of our group out of Connecticut, and it felt that municipalities and governmental units ought to account for the unfunded liabilities of benefits. And so municipalities are going from a pay-as-you-go basis to having to currently acknowledge the total liability. Now, that would be if the doors were closed and we went out of business on June 30. I wrote a white paper to the Financial Accounting Standards Board, because I felt I had a unique opportunity as a CPA, and also as a governmental leader. And I argued that we have gone, as a accounting profession, from one extreme to the other. To go on a pay-as-you-go basis and not anticipate future liabilities is irresponsible. But now, to record all the governmental liabilities at one time is turning the pendulum the other way, because if we attempted to, and it's like Sue Kaminsky's facing the same thing with the school board. I don't know what the liability is on Crestwood, but it's probably greater than the city. And what they've done is, it will turn just about every municipality into a deficit overall situation. So how do we address this? I should point out that I argued my point, and I got some nice comments back, and they all said, "We agree with you, mayor, we think that logically, your position is a very strong one, but Congress wants action done, and we believe in Wall Street." So, we don't see an area of compromise. If you can come up with one, we'll entertain it, otherwise, it's going to happen, and it happened. So, I know that the state passed some legislation which allows communities to address this, and what a lot of communities are addressing it, is they're, like you would buy a bond to finance a building or another purchase. So, the state of Michigan is allowing communities that are financially sound to address this problem by bonding through Wall Street, and then paying it over 30, 40 years, which is what I think is a more realistic picture of that liability, because we're not going to go out of business on June 30. And I don't think any other municipality, Wayne County, the state of Michigan, or any other municipality necessarily, although we did see that in Detroit. Consequently, the city of Dearborn, using a couple individuals, and in fact, one of them I have talked with, and will be coming in to make a presentation, I'm also dealing with Plant Moran, to see if in the next few months, because we have till December 31st, to see if that's a potential solution. If it is not, then I would recommend that we put some money additionally every year to keep, to help fund that. And so, but when I first became mayor, I recognized this, this has been an issue going on for a while, and I ran into all kinds of difficulties and problems in trying to get this thing created. If you recall, I asked you to prepare, I wanted to, in essence, like we do for the pension, where we make contributions, and that money would be there for the health care. Now, for police and fire, the Act 345 has incorporated in it a payment for health care in future. So, in essence, I don't think we need to do the same kind of plan. It would be, in my estimation, taking money that we could all use for what we want to spend on, and to stick millions and millions of dollars away in a fund, has its questions. And that was one of my arguments in my white paper. It's a long explanation to your question. Councilman, we are looking for potential solutions, and we, and I will come back to you. I'm looking at the Dearborn model to address it, and then we also, and I'm going to be meeting with my, with our police and fire, to see if we want to do something similar in with the Act 345. Those will be coming forthright to you, but it's not an easy nut crack, but we're fortunate that we have the bonding rating, that we could very well do that, and by bonding it over 40, 30, 40 years. over 40, 30, 40 years, and that would allow us each year to put money into a fund, and then hopefully eventually, we would be fully accrued in the healthcare fund, as we are very close in the pension fund.
Okay, Chair.
Councilman Conston.
Well, to just echo on what the mayor said, and I know the Lieutenant Governor has a task force regarding these legacy costs, this is the first year that our city didn't opt out and had to comply with the hard cap, which was a mandate from Lansing requiring the employees to pay more towards their healthcare. The auto companies, the unions, all, they created a VIBA, and they, they, now the unions pay that retiree healthcare cost. But that, that liability is a huge liability, and it's, it's out there. As the mayor said, the mayor's, the city's addressing it, Medicare is paying less and less, but that's something that every city is facing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I still like to see the diff, where the, where the money went, the difference.
I think I understand your question now. The council has to approve the balanced budget, and I can only present to you a balanced budget. Consequently, the difference in any savings from my original budget or additional amounts that are expensed, directly hit the fund balance account, fund. So, we know that we have a fund balance of a few million dollars. The state considers a balanced budget even if the revenues and expenditures in any one year, in fact, I just went to a seminar last Thursday with the MICPA, and we had someone from the State Treasury, and the State Treasury says that, as long as there's a sufficient amount of fund balance to cover the difference in revenues and expenditures, the state considers it a balanced budget. So, I expect, and hopefully, from next year, we'll have, last few years, we've been exceeding, revenues have been exceeding expenditures, but we don't know exactly where we are right now, and, but that's, that's the account that we use, and it gives us a balanced budget.
Okay, I know we're talking about budget, but for the union employees, the TPOM contract, we're going on month number six, and we still haven't had anything, we haven't heard anything. So, what's, what's the plan, or is it going to come out of this budget, or what's, the last we see, we saw a contract that wasn't really a contract, you know, just about three, four weeks back.
I disagree, and the mediator, in fact, many of the union members called, because before I got from the mediation session to the council meeting, many of you were congratulating us on having an agreement. I don't know exactly, the mediator, the city administration believes there was an agreement, the mediator believes there was an agreement, the union brought you some correspondence that they want some additional changes. What we've done, and not really received a thank you from anybody, but we instituted the union contract, because I could have sat there and said, "Nobody gets any raises until everybody signs off on the form," and we would, we would have had chaos. And we've instituted the agreement, and, and so consequently. Now, whether or not there is an agreement or not, from my standpoint, there is an agreement. The mediator, who's a neutral party, believes there is an agreement. And I'm going to tell you whether you believe it or not, we've had union people who have signed off on it and told me that we have an agreement. I don't know what the difficulty is on the union side, but it's certainly not my role for anybody on our team to be talking to union members and telling them what, what is going on. But where it took a lot of the pressure off is, we've instituted the agreement. So, everybody got their raises. If I was to call it a, and said that we do not have an agreement, and we're going to go to binding arbitration of some sort, or mediation beyond what we did, I would have to ask all the employees to fork over all the money. That's what the labor attorney told me, and I think that would be very chaotic. So, we tried to live up to what we believe was the agreement, and that's why I don't think we have angry people hollering and yelling at us, but I can't answer your question because the problem is on the union side, it's not on ours.
Council Chair. Two points, if I may, Mayor, in terms of clarifying. One of them is, is that this body ended up voting in December and approved an agreement. And there's good reason to believe that we do have an agreement. Regardless, based on that vote, all of those pay raises and everything economically was instituted based on that impression. So in terms of affecting your budget, I'm not under the impression, although I don't have the knowledge of the budget, haven't been included in these sessions, to believe that you haven't already seen what the budget amounts would be despite the agreement. In other words, since the city has treated the agreement as having been approved in December, and has treated it as basically being implemented, there should not be a fiscal impact based on what you're voting on and then having another contract unless the union changes its position yet again on some significant monetary item. And that's still an issue, that's outstanding, and I think it goes beyond the scope of, of what was this, this meeting. But I have looked into those other issues as we discussed a few meetings ago, and I'd be more than happy to discuss some of these issues in a closed session.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one more, one more concern with the position that we were talking about, the FOIA position. I know we got, we have to vote on the entire budget, I'm not, I'm still not comfortable with that position. I'd rather have an added position for a police officer to run FOIAs instead of just a civil service person, because of the sensitivity with that position, so.
Yeah, that's the security thing.
Yeah, I'd rather, I mean, if I, if I were to vote, I would rather have an added police officer position instead of civil service, I don't know what.
If I'm correct, I do believe that both positions are the same exact amount at 40,000, is that correct?
I would ask the chief.
Because I.
You know, with HR, so it's, police officer starts at 40,000, but I would have to check on what benefits, if they're different between the police officer.
Well, actually, it might make sense, because if.
So, the police officer's wage will go up a lot higher than whatever the amount put in the budget for a civil service employee.
You have to ask the chief this, but if I, if I wanted to be a police officer, would I want to come in and do FOIAs? I would think that, from a promotional and other standpoint, would be like a dead-end job versus a person who is trained and certified in this particular area, that is a career.
We have to hold those positions by seniority and take one out of the top three, so it's going to be most likely a senior person.
If I may ask a question of the chief?
Yes.
Is the, I know that Sergeant Alexander held a position, and Lieutenant Lurst held a position, is there anything in the supervisor's agreement that ends up providing for a police supervisor to be the FOIA coordinator for the police department?
We selected today, it's going to be Lieutenant Torrey Smith will be the new records person taken over for Lieutenant Lurst.
Okay, because there might be a problem with just having a police officer handle it from a standpoint of being in compliance with supervisor's agreement or past practice with regard to that, because the supervisors have been doing this for years. And I might also add that the mayor's administrative assistant is the overall FOIA coordinator for the city, the FOIA coordinator for the police department, who's really more in an assistant role, because of the number of requests, is the person who you appear to be referring to, so.
The other thing I point out.
What they were doing is they put in a position for a techs person, not a police officer, to assist in the record bureau, to assist the lieutenant, personnel, like her, a FOIA coordinator, to do the FOIA work. So it was a new position.
This is up.
Councilman Muscat.
My concern is that that's going to be some sensitive information being looked at. I don't know if I just want a layperson looking at that and not a policeman, I mean, it's just a layperson. I mean, what bounds and rules do we have for that? I would feel more comfortable.
With the background, we just do a thorough background, like we do when we hire dispatchers or anybody, so.
And, and we did agree that that was going to be a civil service position, correct?
But, but in the same way, a dispatcher, and they would have access to the lien and all that stuff, right?
Most likely, up there, right, and they're going to work under the direction of the lieutenant that oversees the record.
Now, how many hours a week would that position be?
It was going to be a full-time position.
Forty hours a week?
40,000 a year, you gave it to us half a year, starting in Jan, right halfway through the budget for 20,000, but it would be, it'd be a four-day, we haven't discussed that yet, four or five-day work week.
Wait until they got it.
Full-time position.
Because the police department's not open four days, are they, just?
You know, our clerks are closed, we're open 24-hour, but our city workers, our TPOM people that work are off on Fridays.
Right, because this wouldn't be a TPOM position, would it? So they would be a five-day work week.
It'd be a five-day work week.
Okay.
And, and, well, are we going to go ahead and make a motion for the budget?
I think there's some questions, because.
Why, wait, I'm doing it, page my page.
All right. Tell us one more.
This one, issue on the contract.
Mr. Clerk, you're, you're, can you interject, please?
I've been sitting here thinking to myself, should I say something, should I not say something, and I, I believe I would be remiss in my job if I didn't say anything. There seems to be some discussion about approving the budget, I, I believe what we did by virtue of passing those 10 things was passing the budget, ladies and gentlemen, that's what you did.
Well, see, this is what I asked, with all due respect, I asked the question, can we do this without doing the budget first? Your answer to me, Mr. Mayor, was yes.
That's correct, because the first line is the budget, so I thought you were going to go to the second one, and I was shocked when you made the motion, but I didn't want to interrupt you.
If, if I could, if I could finish what I.
But now, the motion that was passed is revised one, it's not my submitted one, with the changes the council had instituted.
So, we, we have a problem here.
If I could.
I feel we have a big problem here, because I was, again, the question I asked, can we do the mils before we did this? And my, my feeling was that we could do this, this is why, I mean, this doesn't make any sense, we were here to approve the budget first, and then this, and then we went to the mils. So, I don't know the legalities of changing this.
Madam Chair. Councilman Hicks.
Yeah, and, and with the clerk, because clerk is a parliamentarian, and he is correct, that first line you approved, we all approved, because they were all yeses, approved the general, the budget, is what we just did. However, you, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, parliamentarian, you can go back and do amendments?
Yeah, you can do amendments.
If you chose.
If, if I was allowed to finish what I was saying, the budget was approved. Just to go back, the Act of this council meeting over the last six weeks was to formulate that budget, and that 36 or 63-page document was the budget that you were presented with. The Act of, number one, you passed that budget, you passed that document. To go through it line by line now is an exercise in something you have already done. But what I want to say is, the budget is a fluid document, it's always subject to change. But to, to, in my opinion, to go through it line by line now, you've already done that in a blanket.
Mr. Clerk.
And I, I stand corrected by people who have been here longer than I am, we have the honorable attorney, we have the treasurer here, we have a, a long-term councilman, and we have people that are here, we have our honorable councilmen who sat in the state legislature, you don't approve them line by line, this was the budget. So, for what it's worth, I just wanted to add that, because I felt by not saying that, I would not be doing my job.
Okay, earlier I had mentioned, before we started, I said there's some motions that I'd like to make on the budget, and I stated it clearly. So, with that being the case, it was said by the chairperson, now we're going to go through these first, but it was from the beginning, I said there were some motions that I want to make. So can I still make those based on the procedures?
Mr. Councilman, it's not up to me to make that decision, I, I just pointed out, I wanted to point out to you that you passed the budget.
Okay.
And if I am wrong, please, anybody who.
Then, for clarification, if I make motions right now, and the council approves them, can that not be a part of the budget?
Well, that would be.
I would think it could be, as long as we all approve it.
Let's defer to our, our purpose, council, who, the, all that training we had at the end of last year, we were told that you are the parliamentarian.
The council can end up making motions at this time, it's incidental to the, the main point of this, to end up making motions to amend the budget as submitted and approved. So you could go item by item, or whatever number of items that you really feel the need to, and bring a motion, or make a motion to amend items such and such, to change this amount to this amount, and add, you know, something to it, and then add a certain other, other amount, just as long as it balances, I think you should be perfectly fine.
Okay, so with that being the case, if I may, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I'd like to make an amendment to the 2018-2019 budget. I'd like to make a motion to reinstate three salaries, reinstate the 10% pay cut that the DPW Bill Zimmerman director took, reinstate that salary, the 10%, reinstate the recreation director Congribals 10% pay cut, and reinstate the building director Mohammed Sob's 10% pay cut. I've had conversations with many different people in regards to this, and I feel very, very strongly about this. Also, in addition to that, from the amount of work that's being done, and from a morale perspective, I, I know the one person did not get a raise, and like I mentioned, they did not ask for a raise, and they were already at a salary above the director. So from that perspective, just again purely morale-wise, I'm not sure if that's justified, but that's not for me to decide. I'd like to also reinstate the 10% pay cut that the mayor's assistant, Chrissy Lazwell, took, and have that as a part of the 2018-2019 budget.
Council, Council Chair. I would recommend that specific amounts.
Well, we can figure those out, no problem. I didn't know the exact dollar-for-dollar salaries at the time.
I guess my question is, we'd be violating the ordinance, it's already in writing if we do that.
To go back to that, to go back to that, according to our council at the time, right now, and there was an email sent, I think, to everybody, if, if you don't mind, you could probably say the specific details, this was based on the 2012-2013 budget, one. Two, it was read twice and not finalized as far as an ordinance, but even without, you could specifically say the details much better than I could. But even with that, even with that, even with that, just because there's an agreement made, can't, doesn't mean that you can't change an agreement, as long as, and there's two attorneys in here, all parties agree to make that change, if that's the case.
They have to change the ordinance first, don't you?
Yep, no, that is incorrect, there was no ordinance that ended up stipulating this, this is frankly whoever felt, in all respect to a certain member of the audience who said it was an ordinance, what was passed out was not an ordinance, it was a motion that adopted an ordinance. It did two things, it treated the ordinance as submitted to this body as being adopted because it was read for a second time, and it included a stipulation that the comptroller was to amend the 2012-2013 budget, and I'll read it specifically, it required the comptroller to quote, "Add to the 2012-2013 budget that all combined earnings for department heads that take early retirement not exceed $55,000 annually." So it's a motion that ended up doing so, and the motion did it for a particular year, and that's what was ended up happening. A motion can end up being changed by virtue of another motion, and it is not an ordinance, and that is something which was, Councilman Abdallah, I ended up sending this email on May the 10th to you and to others, and I believe that the mayor indicated that he distributed it to others as well. I think it's very clear that there's misunderstanding about what the item was, the item that was a motion was a motion, it has the force of law, to the degree it is a motion, to the degree it ends up addressing something that can be addressed. It addressed something. It addressed something that could be addressed, but it was not an ordinance. And I think that's a serious misunderstanding with regard to what was passed.
I mean, it-
Madam Chair?
Councilman Musk?
It did specify the ordinance number of H.
Do you have it?
I do have it.
H twelve zero dash zero four.
Yes, it, it adopted that document which was submitted, and that document which was submitted was published as an ordinance. But the motion itself is not the ordinance.
But it was read twice. And in my understanding, every time we've read an ordinance, we do it twice, and it becomes-
Look, the ordinance is not the document that you're referring to. What you are referring to is a council motion, all right? The ordinance is a different item entirely. And that ordinance, which was published, did not contain this language, because it was not part of the ordinance. It was part of the motion that adopted the ordinance, and it was, for purposes of the distinction between a motion and an ordinance, a different beast entirely.
At this point, maybe we should just leave it as is and open it later after we do some more research on it.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Musk?
I'd like to let everyone know, this is what I spoke about. This, this ordinance, it was from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget. And it says that the people that are taking their retirement can collect salary not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. Now, the thing that's in question is, was that meant just for that following year? Or is that from now on, until it's changed? And we haven't had any definitive answer on that, so we, we're not against giving raises, but we are against getting arrested or fined. So we have to have a definitive answer on this before we can actually move on this.
Well, then, all right, we can always open the budget back up in a later date.
Madam Chair? Just out of curiosity, I was thinking-
Have a definitive answer. I mean, I would, I would be more than willing to, if someone wanted to litigate the issue, I'd be more than willing to litigate the issue. I mean, to be frank, if it went the other way, and it was something that had ended up being adopted, and said that the city council ended up having, or the city had to pay a certain amount, I would be saying, look, it's only applies to the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget, and it is only a motion and is not an ordinance.
Just out of curiosity, how come no one asked for a raise after the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget, if it was just meant for that year?
That's directed to me?
The reason is because we had not provided any increases to the general government, TPOAM, and consequently, I was not going to bring an increase in here. What triggered this all was the fact that we had reached what we believe is an agreement with the union, and as my assistant had indicated, that there were seven to twelve percent raises in there. So consequently, we wanted to restore those. And that's why the timeline is what it is. And, and I didn't add the money, but I think either Peggy or Ken Gribble were actually, the amount was lower, because Vince McCurry was part of that. You could actually add a few extra thousand, so these people saved us over a million, at a time that we needed the savings.
And Council Chair, if I may, to end up answering your question a bit more, there were quite a few people who ended up not requesting additional compensation, including the attorneys, who basically report to me during the entire time. And then we came sometime later, because we were all trying to make sacrifices for the city, to make sure that the city got through its tough financial times.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdallah?
I am obviously, clearly, in favor of reinstating some of their salaries. So I'm just thinking out loud here, if you could answer me on this one, Gary, from a, based on my business, we do negotiations creatively. Could you give, if, provided that ordinance is in place, I don't know. I mean, I have to rely on you as a, as a counselor to tell us. But provided it is in place, could it not be done as a bonus? Just curiosity. Hypothetically, let's pretend the dollar amount was ten thousand dollars.
You cannot do bonuses with regard to public sector employees.
Okay, thank you.
Except to the extent that it covers something that they're still going to end up doing work. So, for example, you can't retroactively give employees under the state constitution or the city charter, like a bonus, you did a great job, we're paying you twenty thousand dollars, that we have no legal obligation to pay you.
Okay. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constand?
Well, is, and I've discussed this with some of the other council people before, as we talked about, for example, Warren Valley, the past council can't bind future councils. If we all decide to amend A, B, or C, and the mayor doesn't veto it, it's, it's amended. Just like it, parties to a contract can modify a contract. As the clerk indicated, the, the budget is a, is a fluid, changing, amendable document.
Thank you. Councilman Muscat?
Is it proper that I could rescind my motion here, so we can do something about this, now with everything back in light, and come back and re-adopt the budget?
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Muscat.
I think you're going to have to try and help the clerk, because it gets, gets complicated, but there has to be a way to do it.
Rescind my, my motion to adopt the budget, because there's another question in this budget that I haven't been able to ask, but I can't do it now, since the budget's been approved. Okay? And this is, again, the very first thing I said. Can I do this without approving the budget? And I was told yes.
Yeah, misunderstood. I didn't-
And, and that's, you know, that can't put that on me now, because there's other questions in this budget that I, I want to discuss, and I can't. And then it wouldn't be fair to everybody else who came out here, looking for whatever they're looking for, if we just go ahead and say, okay, the budget's it, we'll pass it, and see you later.
Councilman, if I may, you know, I believe that you would be able to make a motion on a specific item. You have a motion in front of you right now, from Councilman Abdallah, and you could do that with each of the, the individual items that you have a concern with.
But there's more, more to this. He's, he, he's doing just the salaries. Now, I made the original motion to adopt the budget, and I'm the one that has to make the motion to rescind that. I believe I'm correct in that.
No, you would not necessarily, you could ring a motion to reconsider. Of course, everyone was voted for it, and anyone could end up bringing that motion, because the motion passed unanimously. So the, the body could end up doing so.
Because I think we need to look at this more. I believe that we're all not sure of what's going on here, and we can't just arbitrarily vote this in without looking at it some more. And I think another, another special, a, a, a study session on this, I'd like to sit down and talk about what we actually are really doing. So, I, I know Councilman Abdallah's got a motion on the table for the salaries, but with all due respect, I think we should take everything off and, and, and come back and talk about the whole budget as a whole. So I don't know what the next step would be, if Mr. Abdallah would take his motion off the table, and we can go ahead and talk about the whole.
Next we have, Clerk?
Please let me clarify what I brought up. Because the council was discussing about passing the budget. The reason I brought this up is because the budget was passed. And as I said, it's a fluid document. Passing that budget doesn't preclude you from spending till one o'clock in the morning, altering it today. All I wanted to make the point was, the council was saying, now we're going to approve the budget. I just wanted to make the point that the budget was approved. And you're more within your realm of scope of authority to start altering that budget right now, if you so choose. So that was the only point I was trying to make. And, and I was not trying to say that this budget is set and stowed, as I said, it's fluid. I, I just wanted to make that distinction, that you're not now passing the budget you already did. So-
And the budget that they pass is the one that went out with the agenda and has the cuts-
That is correct.
That page with the cuts.
That is correct.
So it wasn't, we're not, people were, but I misunderstood your que, I thought you were going to go to number two, and then you made the motion for one, and it surprised me.
But, like I say, that doesn't stop you now from doing whatever you want to do.
I could actually rescind that, correct?
It's not, it's not necessary to rescind it. It's, it's-
You can make amendments to-
You can make amendments to the budget today. To, to reconsider and rescind and undo, and then do all this, is just an exercise in what order are we going to do it in?
You know, just keep it phenomenal.
You're going to accomplish the same thing, should you want to do something tonight.
We can come back and, and, and put amendments in.
Correct.
So, Madam Chair, you do have the motion for the, it has to be voted on unless he doesn't go with it.
It's-
It's standing.
Madam Chair?
Council?
I, I see what the clerk is saying. We've already gone through the whole budget. There's no sense in going through everything line by line by line, because we were given the new budget four, five days ago, or Thursday. So if there's no changes, other than changes, we should all be good with it. There's no sense, I agree with them, in going through this page by page by page, since it's the same one we received on Thursdays.
See, I just want to open up for your motion, then we're going to have to go page by page for everybody.
Not necessarily.
This week.
Because mine is cut and dry. It's regarding specific four people that work for the city that I feel should get reinstated, you know, should have their money reinstated. And for one, from a moral standpoint, from a business moral standpoint, you got to give her a raise. We don't-
But with all due respect, like Mr. Gribble, ten percent of fifty-five is, I'm going to not get nothing.
No, the, the ten percent would go back to what they received when they got their ten percent. So I don't know the exact, it's not ten percent of fifty-five, it's the higher number.
So until we get all those numbers, then we can't make a decision on what we're going to do.
We can give them to you tonight, right? We got them?
Go ahead and say it. Councilman Basie?
Okay, I guess two things. When we approved the budget for the forty-six million, that's as a whole, okay, first, first comment is, we did not approve this item by item, obviously, yet. And the second thing, I'm still not comfortable deviating from this right now, as we looked at it for the last few days, with us, for us to actually, to go and seek advice from someone else as well. Because we, we already have a, we already have, as we keep going back and forth with the motion, but we have to protect ourselves as a council. We, we need an advice. That's why we put a legal budget for the council, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the citizens of Dearborn Heights, not for few people.
Well, you have to approve a budget by charter, I think it's as of or before June the first.
June the first?
Well, we still have till the end of the month.
I thought it was the first Monday, so that was-
Right, but I know in two thousand twelve, it was done later, wasn't it? It was done like the twelfth of June.
I stand corrected, first Monday.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks?
Question, because again, we have the motion on the floor, so my question's related to that motion. You had mentioned administrative assistant in the mayor's office, and I'm talking about the position, not the person. I'm looking at the changes, this is a document that was sent to us Thursday, that position's not listed now. We haven't addressed that.
No, it is listed.
It's chief of staff, it's a change in title.
Yes. And a, and a change in title that's not denote more money, but as a manager, and at least a couple of you, like Mr. Abdallah's going to understand what I did, your essence giving her zero was a pretty hard blow and a hit to her. As a manager, titles don't get you any extra money, but showed that a lot of us have a deep concern with what this council did. So I changed the title to give it the kind of prominence, because you constantly delegated and represented as a secretarial position, and it is not a secretarial position. So I felt with the change in the title, which does not denote any additional money, it's the same position, but gives her at least a title of significance to help somebody who had her heart tore out of her by this body.
I guess my point too, though, follow-up, is that his motion needs to change, because he used the other, you know, title, right? Would it not need to be chief or-
I have no problem amending my motion to call it chief of staff.
Thank you. Wasn't anything else?
Yeah, but what does the charter say, though?
I think the charter says that she's administrative assistant, not a secretary.
I don't think the charter has anything about administrative assistant for chief of staff.
I remember reading it somewhere.
And let me make something clear here. Our, our charter does not have that position, either positions in the charter. And it also says that, I think you misspoke by saying she was second in command. Second in command lies right there. You're incapable of doing your job. The city people elected you for mayor, nobody else. So how can you say there's a, how can you say that the second in command, you didn't run on a ticket of mayor and vice mayor? You ran as mayor. And if you're incapable of doing your position, that falls on the city council chair, according to our charter. So to say somebody is second in command is not, this is not the vice president of the United States. This is not a vice mayor. This is the mayor, and the charter says the mayor, and if you can't do it, it goes to the council chair. That's why that position is so important. So I, I have to, you know, I, I don't want to argue this point, because our charter clearly says it. And I, and I'm hoping that you don't argue that point, because there's, I, I can't see there's an argument at all. Second in command, there is no second in command. If you're unable to do it, that goes to the council chair. Plain and simple, cut and dry, and I believe our, our count, legal counselor there could tell us that. If a person's only, is, is an employee of the city, an employee.
A department head.
But it's still an employee.
It is.
Still an employee.
I agree with that.
Okay? And that's all I'm saying. And there's no disrespect to any department head. They're all employees. They're not an elected official. Okay? And to be second in command in government means you should be elected. Period. We don't go out and say the president's chief of staff takes over for him when he's gone. In fact, the vice president does that, because he is second in command.
No, you'll find the chief administr, I don't want to argue the point, because I think it, it doesn't get us anywhere, but-
No, it, it doesn't. It, it really truly doesn't. But I want to make a point, according to our charter.
But I'm just saying, if you gave the example of a president, speaker of the House, if the president is, is gone somewhere, it's the administrative people that give the direction to the Department of Education.
Well, the vice president, then the speaker of the House. That's when Reagan was shot, that was a big argument of what, who was going to take over. And, and our secretary of defense at that time said that he was second in command. No, it's the vice president. And if the vice president couldn't do it, it is the speaker of the House. That's government, I learned that back in the eleventh grade.
I agree with you for if the elected official's not able to take office, but this argument is going to lead to anything.
No, it's not. But I just want to make my point clear.
Anyone else?
Can we vote on the motion?
All right. We have a motion on the table. Go ahead and read it again, so we're clear on it, exactly what-
Well, again, I don't have, that's, we'd leave that up to the treasurer of control to have the exact numbers. I don't have the exact numbers, but I am making a motion that we reinstate the ten percent pay cut that they took at the time, whatever salary that they had at the time, for DPW director Bill Zimmerman, recreation director Ken Gribble, building director Mohammed Sob, and the mayor's administrative assistant Chrissy Lazlo. I'd also like to make a statement, just for clarity. I did not get a call from the mayor on this, I did not get a call from anybody on this. This is something that I personally believe in, and that's why I'm stating it. I know I'm going to take some heat, I know some people may not like it, but it's something I believe in, and that's why I'm saying this. So I don't want anybody to think this is something that somebody pushed me into, because nobody's going to push me into nothing. I'll say it here publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table by Councilman Abdallah, supported by Councilman Constand. Everybody in favor of the mo-
Any discussion?
She's got the dollar figures here.
Numbers, dollar figures, then we got to do fringe benefits, we've got to do everything. Okay? Everything's got to be redone. So how am I going to vote on that tonight? I mean, you can give me their salaries, but what about all the fringe benefits? Everything is going to change. Everything's going to change. This is why I believe we should be doing this, doing this af, you know, a week ago, we were said that this couldn't be done, they couldn't get this done to us for, for, in just two days. just two days. Now, all of a sudden, here we're sitting, and this stuff is already available to us, okay? I need to have all of those numbers gone through with the comptroller, doing all the fringe benefits and everything, line by line.
Madam Chair, but with all due respect, though, Madam Chair, those proposals are already on the table from day one in the budget.
Not the 10%, no.
No, okay, they had a pay raise, specific pay raise.
Yes.
I mean, they, they had it on there.
Your, your motion is for 10% from where they were. And now the fringe benefits all changed, too.
All right, at this point, we have a motion.
May I try to say one thing?
Okay, Counselman.
Being new, I know that, I, I am in favor of people getting back to 10% that they gave up years ago, but I don't know, has everyone got their 10% back? Everyone that's gave it up?
Yes.
No. Yes, no. Yes, no.
All right, at this point, we've got a motion on the table.
Can I answer a question? Am I allowed to answer the question? Okay. About two meetings ago, I submitted a spreadsheet to the council, including the mayor, and that's, I dug, I did on my own, just because I am new here, and I don't know the history, and I keep hearing people throwing back numbers, oh, they didn't get it, they didn't get it. So, I took a sample from payroll, from every single union, from back to the time where everyone took pay cuts, to now.
What year was that?
That was 2011. I have a spreadsheet that I gave everybody. In this spreadsheet, if you looked at it, it shows that what they currently are making now, as what was the effective date if they received a raise, and where their, their pay cuts were. So, when you're talking about the TPAOM, as Chrissy pointed out, most of them made, a lot of them, the sample that I took, I took samples of people that were here at that time period, so that I could see. And the, the TPAOM employee that I found actually took a six and a half pay percent pay cut when their hours were cut, not exactly 10, because it seems like they enjoyed a pay increase along with the hourly cut. So, it was six and a half percent. And when you look at that person, they took six and a half, and then since this new contract was ratif, not ratified, but when they got paid for it, that person got a seven and a, 7.3% increase. And they will get another 1% increase as of July 1st. So, that puts them above whole. Every single employee that I sampled besides the department heads have all been made whole plus some as of this current year.
With all due respect, some of that money was negotiated money. It wasn't money that went back to old money and come back and, and, and get another 1% on old money. So, you can throw that out the window.
No, 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 I'm just saying, they're just, they're realizing a gain where the department heads have not realized a gain at all.
Because you say they got their 10% back, no, because if they took a six and a half percent cut, and had received 7.3 in pay raises through negotiations, they didn't get on old money. That's not on new money. So, that, that percent was not done.
All right, let's just vote on the motion on the table.
Well, no, I'm just saying...
This is not my first vote, right?
If you, if you look at it at the, the general terms, they were made whole.
Thank you.
I do have the wages for the employees that you were asking for, if you want the actual sums, I'll be glad to give it.
All right, well, we've got a motion on the table. All those in favor of Councilman Abdullah's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The no's have it.
Can we announce the vote, please?
Hand vote.
Person by person?
Hand vote, okay. Those, those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed?
Can I abstain?
No.
No.
Conflict, it's a lot of conflict for you, or me, or anyone.
Not until we get all, all the information with, with the...
We need information.
We just gotta look at...
We just don't have enough information right now.
So, 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 Madam Chair, so, so, let's clarify. So, are you voting no, or are you voting, let me wait to get information before I can decide?
We just voted no tonight, and then we'll address that in the future.
And then we can address it?
Madam Chair. We'll address that with another motion.
Madam Chair, I fully agree. I mean, without the information, I can't make a sound vote. I would like more information, we need to revisit this.
Yeah, because I'd like more information, too.
It's not fair to everybody.
I'm open to that, definitely.
If you don't get all the information, okay?
It's not the way to do it.
For all the information.
Okay, at this point, we did pass the budget. Guess we can open it up to public comment?
No.
Please limit your comments to three minutes, and state your name and address, please. Any public comment? Oh, I'm sorry, clerk?
I just want to make everybody aware, I was notified by our printer today that our absentee applications for the upcoming election went to the mail today. So, I just want to make everybody aware, once again, it is a dual application. You'll have both elections, the August primary only, or November only. Please check the appropriate box for what you want, fill it out completely, sign it. We have a spot to give your phone number or your email address. People are reluctant to do that, and I understand that. All I will tell you is, we do not sell, give out, in any way, shape, or form, your phone number or your email address. What this will help us with is if you do not fill the form out properly, we want to contact you to make sure that you get the proper ballot or ballots that you're requesting. Oftentimes, people forget to check. Putting your phone number on there or your email address allows us to contact you immediately, rather than sending you a letter with another absentee application. Feel no obligation to fill that out, I promise you, we, we don't give it out, but I just want to make you aware, so you should be seeing this in your mailbox by the end of the week. We do not have the ballots, the ballots have not been finalized. My discussion with Wayne County is, there's still some question as to even who's on the ballots. So, the ballots will be forthcoming as soon as we get them, but the applications are out. So, thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Counselor Chair, I, I just wanted to mention that Mayor and I just had a brief conversation, and in terms of H1204, I will be asking for the copy as published from the city clerk to confirm this issue, so that if this issue is reviewed, and I will send something out to everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we're opening it up to public comment, limited to three minutes. State your name and address.
I'll be brief. Zohair Abdalhaq, Dearborn Heights resident. I just want to say something. I am, again, not against giving people fair raises, if the money is available. That is my standing. I worked for companies, and I know how it feels when you do job and you don't get what you deserve at the end of the year. The second thing I want to say, when you look at the budget, and there are increases or numbers proposed, I like you to be precise about the number. Put it in the budget, so there is no way it will be changed later or interpreted in different way. Every number which is proposed must be down to the dollar amount, so we know exactly how it is. And I am one of the shareholders in this city. We all share the properties, the liabilities, and the revenues, and everything in this city. As we speak right now, every child, every person, everybody in this city is liable to 3,500, 500 dollars for the liability of 111 million dollars, which we have. I hope you consider that, because we don't want, if anything happened to the stock market, anything, God forbid, happen, you know, around the world, all of a sudden, we find out that we do not have money to pay the people who are counting on their pension and their benefit. So, I like you, please, to take that into consideration, and find some plan where, with the administration, you can tackle that issue in the next, you know, few years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step up and state your name, address, and limited to three minutes, please.
Michelle Kramer, I live at 7503 Colonial. Actually, something did happen to the budget. It did happen in 2011, and that's why those department heads that you were discussing came up with the solution of taking that pay cut. So, it did happen, and they have the heart for the city, and that's why they gave up that raise. And all we're asking for you to do is to reinstate that money. And you say you want to be fair to everyone, well, you're not being fair to them, when you don't consider that they took the pay cut. A gentleman earlier said that there are others in line for the job, and that's true, there's always somebody who'll take the job. But you know what? These people have the experience, they have a lot of education, they've gone to a lot of different workshops, they've interfaced with different people in different cities, they know what it takes to take our city into the future. And I think all this contention is really too bad for the city. We're supposed to be working together, and it seems like you're working against people, and you're not being fair to them. And I'm really disappointed with that. I think you guys can do better. And I hope we will. Thank you.
Name, address, in three minutes.
Suzanne Todd, 411 Academy Street. All I've heard tonight is about the cuts everyone has taken, but not one person has mentioned that we, the taxpayers, override, went overridden, or whatever, overrode the Headley Amendment and increased our taxes, and that Headley Amendment is still in effect. So, please, don't, you're not the only martyrs in this city that had to give up. We, the taxpayers, at that time, especially the senior citizens, could not really afford that Headley Amendment and the increased taxes that it put on us. So, they are not the only ones. In fact, if it wasn't for us overriding the Headley Amendment, police officers and fire officers would have been let go. We, the people, also have taken cuts to our money that was ours to keep everybody working. I don't see anybody talking about taking that Headley override away. The little bit we get back, you could probably, maybe buy a cup of coffee with? No. You have to remember, we, the residents, overrode that Headley Amendment. We increased our taxes when we couldn't afford to, and no one in this city was laid off. And we are still paying that Headley Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Name, address, in three minutes, please.
Gary Barkoff, 5615 Academy Street. I'm really confused, I really don't know what happened tonight. Madam Chair, if you could tell me. On the department heads and the mayor's assistant, is it being like more or less tabled, or they voted it down, or what actually happened?
At this time, they did approve the budget, but they, we will be readdressing it, or revisiting it at a later date.
So, it hasn't really been voted down, then?
It's been voted in as it's set tonight, but it, it's possibly going to be changed in the near future.
Okay, do I have the right to ask each council person why they would be voting their raises down?
Not at this time. It's your public comment. They can answer if they want, but they're not required to.
Don't you think they owe it to the public to know why they would be voting it down?
They're not required to, and we're not looking for any kind of controversy here.
I know they're not required to, but...
You know, at this point, I would just...
I mean, you guys are elected officials by the, by the residents of Dearborn Heights, and I think the people that are watching on TV, and the people that came down here tonight, and I hate to use the word wasted their time, or, you know, whatever, but I think they would like to know.
Madam Chair.
Counselman Abdullah?
Just for clarification, in regards to the motion that we had, I know it was about a year or so ago, in regards to how we're gonna be running this, it was on the agenda items that the council people had agreed we would not comment back. But in regards to the public comments, yes, we can comment back, and that's an agreement we all did. So, at this particular point, if somebody chooses to, they could answer back, if they'd like...
Right, we're not gonna require them, but if they choose to just remain silent, they have that option at this time.
So, does any of the council people, any of the council people would like to comment?
I've already stated that, due to the fact that we're not sure on if we can give them raises legally or not, is my main reason. I'm not against giving raises, but I am not convinced 100% that we can legally give them the raises. I've been told from different people, I've got something from the mayor's office, I showed it to different legal people, some people say that's this way, and they say, well, this is, this is a budget for 2013 only, some say, no, this is a budget from 2013 on, and with the no more than $55,000 annually. So, this is what's holding me back from, from okaying it right now.
Me, too.
And as far, as far as the administrative assistant, I wasn't around, I was out of town at that time, I'm willing to readdress that issue, and that's where I stand right now.
Thank you very much. My great concern is, if Ken Gribble was to decide tomorrow that he is going to, I hate to use the word retire or resign, what's gonna happen to the Spirit Festival next, next week?
At this point, I think everything's already scheduled, it kind of will just run itself.
Run itself? Are you kidding?
And there's other employees that...
I understand, well...
Go ahead.
I don't think it's gonna run itself.
I mean, I think things are already in place.
But also, Director Gribble is very responsible, and he has a Spirit Festival committee who does a lot of the work, and I'm sure, and we talked about this, that you always have to have that backup plan, and I imagine he would have something in case something happened to you, which we don't want, you know, like health-wise, for example, you know, a good manager has a plan and relies on their team, which we talk about a team, to work together through anything that, and we don't want anything to ever happen to someone, but I would imagine that would be the case. I wouldn't know him not to be responsible. I did want to say, because I know Counselman Wensel answered your question, and I also publicly, I already stated, that, you know, the amount of time that goes into researching facts and getting all your information, and I'm not gonna go into the amount of hours that I've done, but just even over this OPEB thing, I mean, that's hours of hours of research, calling people, fact checking, I have a stack of papers, you see all my papers here, I mean, to do your due diligence is necessary to effectively work for your residents. So, I'm not saying the conversation's closed, I'm saying we need to sit here and discuss this, and get all that information, and do our due diligence, obviously, we've been working on this for months, but that's, you know, this is the tip of, this has to be revisited. I want it to be fair as well. So, I've already stated that, and I just wanted to clarify it.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just hope the right decision is made, regardless if it's right or wrong. I really hope you make the right decision.
There's comments in the back, and I want to know if that's gonna be addressed to me openly.
Can you please come up to the speaker and repeat?
Because we've got multiple things going on here.
Yeah, we've got a lot of...
The OPEB number is 168, not 110.
Okay, come to the speaker, so, because I don't think we have the second speaker today.
The OPEB number is 168, 110 is the pension.
Yes, I, I have the reports here, thank you.
Right, but you keep addressing the 110, it's, it's a different item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
If I may address the clerk, with this ordinance, it's starting to be a little, little crazy now, you know? We do, don't have one, we do, don't have one, we do, don't have one. Is it as clear as just looking it up? I mean, I, I'm just, or maybe I'm asking something crazy, but is it as clear as just looking up if we do or don't have an ordinance? Is there any way that, and I, and I'm not, in no way, shape, or form blaming it on you? No. But I'm saying, can that be looked up? Do we, or don't we?
Do we have an ordinance?
No, but this is a reading.
Well, at this point, I guess we'll just, we were gonna research it at a future meeting, right?
Let, let him answer, go ahead.
Yeah, let him answer.
If I may.
Please, please.
There's an ordinance. The ordinance, however, does not provide, as far as I know, nor would I expect it to, to have the language that you are referring to, which is in the motion. That is what I was referring to before public comment started, is that I'm going to make sure I have the exact ordinance, which was published by the clerk's office, and then I will end up providing an opinion based on that specific language. But based on what I see in terms of the motion, I'm not expecting it to be anything different than what I originally ended up submitting for consideration by the council, and the motion did not say that we ended up amending the ordinance that's submitted.
Now, is there an expiration date on that ordinance that you put in for 2000, starting in 2012? Is it stated that there's an expiration period?
The body ended up putting in the ordinance, and there would not be an expiration until it ends up, unless it says by its terms, but I doubt that it said by its terms. It should have ended up saying something to the effect of, this is a special early retirement that would end up applying to certain classes of employees, we've done a number of these that would end up applying to certain classes of employees. We've done a number of these over the years, and that it would end up having certain eligibility and certain requirements in terms of when it would end up being applied for. That's what I would expect it would be in, because that's what all of them have generally had.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can we have the clerk give, finish his opinion, or his statement?
I don't know.
Yeah, we do, we do have the ordinance. Certain council members have contacted me, and we provided them with the ordinance. The ordinance is online. You could look it up online. I know that prior to this council being formulated in 2018, that we provided each and every one of you with an ordinance book, so.
I have it.
Yes.
It's there.
I have it, too, yeah. Thank you. All right, any other comments? Go ahead. Go ahead. Mr. Kunsinski?
Once again, I'm not looking over your shoulder, but I'm back. When Councilman Abdullah asked the question, when you could make changes that he had in mind, those changes should have occurred at the time that the budget motion was on the table. Those changes now in the record show that they were made after the budget was approved. That step is not on today's agenda.
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
Secondly, I heard the figure 38% increase. Is it? When you calculate the numbers of the give-back period of 10% over a span of years, you come up with a pretty good chunk of money that has been given back and not restored. What I think is meant by 38% is a restoration of what the employee should have been getting right along, but they joined in, in helping the community, and took the 10% break like everybody else. And if you calculate 5% compounded annually on the rate that the retirees had gotten, or for that matter, a $55,000 salary, you will come up with an approximation or a similar number to that of what is intended to be restored in this budget. And finally, the body has confirmed not to give the administrative assistant an increase in salary. She's a long-term employee, has demonstrated an ability to do the job, and she is a woman. As a layman, I wonder if the constitutional lawyers might have a field day with that decision.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name's Dana Parrish, 614 Greenly Park. I want to revisit that thing that I brought up earlier. Mr. Mayor, who is the person in your city who was responsible for telling you that a home was sold to the city at this particular date, 2017 versus 2016? Who told you that?
I may, I may have published my information, but do I-
Okay. Where did you get that information from, sir?
Pardon me?
Where did you get that information from, sir?
I think I might have relayed in that information.
From, where did you get that information?
My brain.
You received it from your brain? You didn't look it up anywhere? You weren't told any, by anyone?
No, I'm aware of what was purchased, because I was involved in it. If I relayed that information to him, I may have given him the incorrect information.
So, you're not aware that the property was actually purchased September 1st, 2016?
Yeah, I am aware of that. It was my motion that I brought to council, and to approve the purchase, so that we can chair the property now.
So, I was told 2017. So, why was I told 2017 when it was purchased by the city in 2016?
I made a mistake.
A one-year mistake?
Yes, sir.
Okay, another question, sir. This is through the chair. I looked on, I also went online. There were 33 visits to that property over the number of years from 2001. There were maybe a handful of violations, and I know you weren't there the entire time, so I'm not looking at you. Maybe a handful of violations issued. 33 visits, and maybe five violations issued the whole time.
We made, we made some mistakes with that property, but we're correcting it now.
Mr. Mayor, the buck stops here. And, you know, I tried to get through to you, I told you this before at the last, the last one, and integrity, this speaks to integrity. One-year difference. I was a captain in the army, I was a police officer, I was raised from a child, to always be honest. One year.
And I'm a Catholic, and I'm a man, and I have integrity, too. I made a mistake.
Yeah, I understand, and I've been calling-
I was called there last week with contractors, trying to start-
I'm, I'm addressing the mayor. You're out of line.
But you're talking about my-
Okay, point of order.
Madam Chair.
Point of order. I'm speaking with the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chair.
This problem, this problem is going on and on, and I can't get through to you, sir. I've been trying to go through your office many, a dozen times at least, and I can never get through to you, sir.
Council Chair, if I may.
After the meeting, why don't you come up, we'll set up an appointment, you can come in.
That'd be great. I can never do that. I've tried.
Okay, thank you.
And Council Chair, if I, if I may, Council Chair, I've contacted the Civil Division over at the 20th District Court. We will be moving forward with the eviction process, and I just wanted to confirm that we would not have to go through the publication process, which will end up making the process go much faster than was suggested by Mr. Parrish.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
St. Kaminski. I just want to say a few things. First off, I'm disappointed that the budget was approved when there's still so many questions, but I applaud this body for admitting that there's a lot of unknowns, and that you're going to take further time to research it. And some of those unknowns came up tonight, just in the differences in the way things were spoken. It was said that the union workers are back to even. It was said they got a 7% raise. It was said that they took a 6.5% reduction. Well, if you look at all of that, then they got a 1% raise, you know? So, you have to look at the numbers, and how they work for them, how they work for the administrators, and I agree that it's wonderful that people took cuts to make things work, and that those cuts should be reinstated. And I don't think we can even talk about raises until we get those cuts reinstated, and then look at what our budget is, and look what kind of money we have to disperse, and then make that decision. So, good luck, because you guys are gonna need it, and thank you for taking the time to research it.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns?
Council Chair.
We're here, second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I made the motion, Dave Abdullah seconded.
I didn't get who made it.
Have a good night.
Councilman Abdullah seconded. Thank you.